All right. Good afternoon. I hope everyone was able to have cake. Today is Tuesday, May 24.
Sorry, we do have some. On our agenda tonight, item 1301, adoption of the minutes. If you open that up to item 1102, in a substitute motion, it was moved by Webster, second by trustee Turner, to take this item until after close session. So I need to add that little portion there. And then the other one is item 17.02, human resources. The subject should read as follows. Approval of the contract amendment for the superintendent reflecting an increase in the medical insurance cap to 18,652 effective July 1, 2022, and an increase in life insurance to 150K effective July 1, 2022.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so going on to point 2.002, adoption of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve?
A motion.
Okay, I got a motion from trustee Ekis, and can I get a second? Second.
Webster seconds.
Okay, thank you. And now we need the vote.
Trustee Ekis.
Hi.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster.
Trustee Webster, I.
Trustee Ben.
And Ben's, I. Motion passes 5-0. Moving on to three special recognitions.
Thank you, trustee Benson, board. And I want to turn it over to sort of special recognition to Mr. Moran. Thank you.
All right, good evening, President Bentz, trustees, superintendent, Dr. Mitchell, cabinet members, staff, and guests. Gives me great pleasure to be here tonight to recognize staff of the Alamo Elementary School District who have devoted their careers to enriching the lives of our beautiful children in our community. Not only have these staff members, we recognize site enrich the children's lives, they've also supported each other, classified and certified colleagues at their sites or in their respective departments. And again, it's an honor to for me to present this tonight. So thank you for everyone here who arrived early. Thanks for seeing us stop as well with a cake and punch. So tonight typically, this is an annual event held in the fall, but again, due to the pandemic, the district postponed this event until it's safe to do so. Typically, it's done in the fall, so we will resume that practice in the fall, in August. So the annual service awards is a ceremony that's part of a tradition of recognition and gratitude for all of our employees whose accomplishments and outstanding work contribute to the success of the students, staff, teachers, and alumni of the school district. The annual service award tonight will honor, recognize, and will honor and recognize our staff reaching 30 years of service. We will recognize staff who completed 30 years of service to the district during the 1920 school year and during the 2021 school year. So when I call your name, please come forward to receive your plaque. If you are on Zoom, if you don't mind putting your camera on so we can see and acknowledge you as well. So when I call your name, please come forward to receive your plaque. Ms. Dana here will direct you and will have you sit in the front. So for the 1920 school year, we have Dara Bunch, Proctor, 30 years of service. Okay, so for the 2021 school year, 30 years of service, we have Kevin Castle, teacher. We have Mary Kosh Cowan, teacher. 30 years of service plus many more years in another district. I was talking to her earlier, so congratulations. And we have Gloria, better known as Veronica Monta, executive assistant. All right, congratulations. So if the board members and cabinet, if you could come around, we'll take a picture. Again, these are the boys for 30 years of service. All right, congratulations for your 30-plus years of service.
Okay, so now we're on to 3.02, retirees celebration.
Thank you, President Bentz. Good evening again. Now we will move on to recognize staff of the Alamo Elementary School District who retired last year, 2021 school year, and recognize staff retiring this year, the 2122 school year. So for the 2021 school year, we had 19 retirees, which is approximately about, I think we calculated 355 years of service. For 2122, this year, we have 23 retirees with about 436 years of service. So collectively between the 42 retirees, this equals to approximately 791 years of service to our children. So congratulations. The list includes, the list of retirees includes staff from many positions, food service workers, clerks, bus drivers, proctors, a warehouse staff member, secretaries, custodians, a library media coordinator, a payroll technician, teachers, a supervisor, principal, and my predecessor, the assistant super of HR, Andrea, as well. So thank you all for your service, for years of service and dedicating your career to our children, staff and community of the Alamo Elementary School District. Let's give them another round of applause. So when I call your name, please come forward. We have these beautiful plaques for you. And again, we'll have another photo opportunity as well. First person, Eileen Bauer Melva Davis. And if you are on Zoom, please turn your camera on to be acknowledged. We have Shana Bolu. Cheryl Crawford. Andrea Fidel. Marty Draper. Dale Finch. Jack Hall. Barbara Hughie. Mary Jones. Yolita Marks. Melody Martinez. Craig McMillan. Ruth Oliver. Patricia Rifkin. Marie Calvo Roth. Maria Rubio. Lizbeth Sawyer. Jay Smith. Jeffrey Steenerson. All of them must be on vacation.
They're on vacation. They're retired, tired. They don't have to be anywhere.
Regina Aguilera. Charmaine Bell. Diane Burkhardt. Boogie Campbell. Stacy Costa. Ambardo Castillo. Mary Kosh Cowan. Ruth Fairley. Usana Galindo. Olivia Gomez. Andre Holloway. Angela Coach. Gloria Lopez. Margaret Loring. Cynthia Palacios. Ruth Reddy. Deborah Reynolds. Melissa Reich. Susan Rodriguez. Ofelia Vazquez. David Waller. Donna Walton. Leslie Windham. These are all of our retirees for the last two years. Another round of applause for them. So trustees and cabinet, if you could please come around for a picture.
So cool. Should do this every board meeting.
I want to recognize everybody.
Every, every meeting.
Every meeting. Yeah. Student of the month, teacher of the month.
Okay, thank you. Again, thank you for allowing me to present tonight. Again, congratulations on the retirements of all of these wonderful people who, especially those who weren't here, I guess they're enjoying a good time retiring. I wish you the very best in your future endeavors. Let's give another round of applause. Thank you. Thank you, President Bentz.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moran. Okay, we are going on to four close sessions. We will be taking items 4.02 and to 4.04 in closed session. Moving on to five public testimony before closed session.
Madam President, we have no speakers for a close session.
Okay, so we can, I need a, got thrown off. Six recess to close session. Can I get a motion?
Ekis, I'm motion.
Okay, and can I get a second?
Trustee Turner, a second.
Okay, and now we need a vote.
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Ben.
And Ben's, I. Motion passes 5-0. It is now 5:50. So let's go ahead and reconvene. The time is now 8:02. Call to order. Can we have a roll? Roll call, please.
Trustee Ekis.
Here.
Trustee La French.
La French, here.
Trustee Turner.
Present.
Trustee Webster.
Trustee Webster, present.
Trustee Ben.
And Ben's present. Okay, let's see, there is nothing to report out. So let's go on to nine public testimony. 9.02, ADTA and CSEA rep represent sentatives.
So the board invites representative for ADTA, Ms. Jennifer Rader. Welcome.
Thank you and good evening. Hi. Welcome, or thank you for having me and good evening, trustees. The school year is coming to a close, just six days left. And I know our teachers are finishing strong even as we plan end of year fun for our students and awards assemblies to honor those who hardworking kids who really applied themselves. I'd like to congratulate our wonderful retirees. They have dedicated a lifetime to educating children, caring for generations of girls and boys that like they were their own. We thank you for your many years of faithful service. We will be celebrating our retirees with an end of year party on Thursday at the Maverick Stadium. We are hoping our CSEA brothers and sisters will join us as well as all our terrific teachers. The cost for non-members is $22 if you would care to join us. You, the board, should know that the plan to stuff our fourth and fifth grade classes full of 36 students is still in place. The cap of 36 was to protect our middle school classes, not license to enroll up to the limit. Please come visit our schools. See for yourselves how full the classes are with 30 students. Ask yourselves where would six more desks be crammed? I've said it before and I'll say it again, these students lost an entire year last year, and your expectations for us to close the achievement gap would be challenging under any circumstances. But now packing our classes full, we are almost guaranteed to fail. Students need more individualized attention, not less. Please remember that your teachers' working conditions are your students' learning conditions. We were looking forward to another summer of learning recovery because the students really need the time and the help. And while this year's summer school team has been dutifully planning an amazing program, however, the attendance numbers are far fewer than were projected and is causing a bottleneck in the information dissemination. Parents had trouble enrolling due to a cumbersome system, but the administration has since reverted to a simple Google form for parents to sign up. We anticipate the numbers of enrollees will continue to grow up. Please spread the word. On another matter, our ISP program served over 400 families well this past year. And unfortunately, it's been completely dismantled. Dr. Mitchell shared that he has some plans in the works, but we need information for parents now. It is not feasible for every one of these students to return to a traditional school situation. These families need to know their options now before they go looking outside the district for many other virtual options that exist. Finally, I'd like to offer my hopes to all of you to enjoy a restorative summer break because next year when we return, we will be on our A-game. We came back from our year of distance learning and we were shell shocked. But now we have acclimated and adapted, and we have a plan for next year to be better in every way. We are going to press for better attendance rates, encourage mental wellness and coping skills, and practice doing hard things. Our students need encouragement to know that they can do hard things. We have future leaders in our classes and we want to prepare them fully for those future roles. Please don't let the district hamstring us in our efforts by exploiting the maximum class sizes for our schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, the board. I don't see Diane Lynn or representative for CSEA. No Sinatra? Okay, great. Thank you. The board welcomes. Hi, welcome.
Hello, board. Hello, staff and team. First and foremost, congratulations on getting through another school year. It's been tough for everyone. It has been a really long recovery this year for all of our kids, for all of our teachers. It's been a struggle to get back into the classroom and to re-acclimate to an entirely new landscape of education and learning after having experienced significant trauma culturally. Unfortunately, that was exacerbated with oversized classrooms. And my son is in the fifth grade. He's just about to be promoted to sixth. And I hear so much about his classroom being out of control. Him feeling frustrated and scared in his own classroom where he should be able to enjoy a safe learning environment. And he doesn't get to do that. Last session, board member Ekis had mentioned the need to secure our schools. And the best first thing that we can do to ensure safer classrooms for our kids and for our teachers is to reduce our classroom sizes, not push them to the limit. It's unfair to our kids. They're not getting the attention that they need. They're not getting the support that they need when their teachers are spending all of their time just trying to keep the classroom under control. It's unreasonable and we need to make sure that we are doing the best that we can for our kids, investing in bringing on new teachers and making sure that we can afford, or that we are affording ourselves investment in the best teachers and talent that we can attract and retain. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now that concludes our public comment. Thank you.
Okay, so let's go on to 10 superintendent's report.
Thank you. I'm going to share my screen, Anthony. We'll start with a couple of announcements. So so like this, this duck kind of represents COVID and us just trying to survive this year. So I just wanted to take a few minutes to congratulate our 30-year staff and retirees. Thank you for all your service to the district and the Alamo community. We thank you, our 30-year employees, for all the service that you provided. And we wish our retirees well on a new chapter in their life. I want to congratulate all of our students who have been honored in a host of end-of-year activities, promotional ceremonies for Ks and fifth graders and eighth graders, year-end activities and celebrations by classroom level or programs or clubs, awards assemblies across all of our schools, just fun stuff for our kids to participate in. I've been at several schools this year so far and I'm just running around from school to school. It's just really wonderful to see smiles and faces and our staff just providing some good times for our kids and staff. So thank you, students, for, we're very So, thank you, students, we're very proud of you, this year's students, just wanna personal message to all of our kids out there. Wanna thank you for all the hard work that you've shown and the determination that you've shown, and we want you to have a great summer break, so thank you all the students out there. I want to thank our entire ASD staff, we made it through another tough year. Just wanna thank each and every staff member for your grit and pure will to create high-quality learning environments for our students despite the challenges. And this would made me think of this picture here with the frog who refuses to get swallowed. And I wanna end by saying thank you to our parents and families. We don't oftentimes thank them publicly, but we know that they were right with us. And the grit and determination that they showed was also outstanding to help us support our kids in this new learning environment. Wanted to talk a little bit about some other announcements, and so just to touch on, again, with Ms. Rader, we have our summer enrichment camp registration still open, we have enrolled six hundred students thus far, we're trying to get to thirteen hundred. We enrolled three hundred just last week, so we're confident that we'll get that number. I remember we're offering it to Rising, K three seven, June ninth to July one, eight to twelve, breakfast is provided. Registration is online, can be found on our website, as well as we've created a Google Doc to make things a little easier, as our internet is a little spotty at times. The program is exciting, it'll include not only just academic enrichment, but also study trips and fun assemblies and projects, and so parents, looking forward to you. Join, having your kids join us this summer, and if there's any questions, please see, the school's principal is probably the first and best and easiest person to see about registering for our summer school, so thank you, Board President, those are my comments.
All right, thank, thank you. Okay, go, go, going on to eleven, govern- governing board men, members read reports and announce, announcements. Who would like to go first?
Okay, now I'm on. Again, congratulations to our thirty-year veterans in our district, that is so awesome, just amazing. And to our retirees, that's a lot of retirees, it breaks my heart. But I understand, you know, their position and what they wanna do in life, and I get it, you know, you can, you can only work for so long. But I am gonna miss them, all of them, and it was wonderful, cuz I know a lot of them. And that is just such an honor to be able to know so many wonderful people. So I wish everybody well and just, you know, I pray that they do well in life and they're happy and blessed and just thank you for being in our district for so long and giving us your service, thank you.
Okay, who'd like to go? Go ahead, Trissy La, La French.
Evening, everyone, I just wanted to take the time out to thank our, our retirees. And I always say that, you know, I wish I was retiring, I say that at work, I say that when I'm here, I will be very grateful when I can retire as well. I want to say how thankful and grateful I am to have employees that have been here thirty years. It is so wonderful for someone to stay at a job thirty years, they must, 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 must love their job because between economics and thirty years, I'm pretty sure that does not equal out, it doesn't. I'm so grateful to see people that have stayed here for thirty years. I also wanted to give a shout out to all our children and the parents for their being able to go to graduation ceremonies to have dances and parties right now. Considering us coming from, out of COVID, another thing that I want to say, please, you know, enjoy for the teachers. I know that when I was a teacher and used to be able to go home for the summer, that is the most wonderful feeling to say the door is closed, the classroom is clean, and I am out of here. Unfortunately, I don't have that position anymore, but I wish I could say the same thing, but enjoy your summer, have a wonderful time. And I know for me as a parent, as, I wanna say thank you for all of this that you guys have done in order to help our children this year to move them forward, and I appreciate it, I probably talked too long, thank you.
Thank, thank you.
I'll go next. I concur with my fellow trustees. You know, the work on a job thirty years, that is, that's just awesome, that means that you were given an opportunity to feel welcome, feel like at home, and for, for those of you that have thirty years that are not retiring, I appreciate you too, I appreciate our new teachers, I appreciate all of our teachers, you've endured for the past two years something that we can't even imagine going through. And, you know, I, I'm really hearing the news today about our babies, you know, it's too much of that going on. We need to find a way to help our children. Why do you need to go into your school with a gun? We, we, we have to do better. We need to look at that, not just have a moment of silence, but really look at what can we do to help our children. They're suffering. And this past two years didn't help them at all. Those parents, they got the news of their babies never coming home. We have to do better, we need to look at our programs and not say that happened in Texas, or that happened in Colorado, or that happened there, it didn't happen here, it did, cuz I'm affected, we're affected by that. We're going into the summer, I, I need us to all think about, well, we'll be meeting, but what can we do? I'm hearing that we have a surplus of money. We can use some of that money to help our children, our, our children need it. And they need us to make the decision for them, because we're in the decision-making positions to do that. And I agree, stuffing our classes with thirty-six kids, that's not helping them. It's not helping the teacher, it's not helping the parent, it's not helping anything for a child to come home and not wanna go back, because it's just too disruptive, there's not a lot of learning happening here. It's disappointing to me, sitting in this seat. We have to do better, and I know we can do better. We're here because of children. Children, our children cannot sign contracts, they can't go buy a car, they can't go get a credit card, they can't do any of that. They depend on us to make decisions for them, and we cannot ignore that. And I will leave it at that again, you know, I appreciate everyone's hard work over this past year. And I'm looking for bigger and better things for next year. And programs for our children, they need it. So I'll leave it with that, thank you.
Okay, trustee Web- Webster?
Hey, good evening. I wanna take a second and recognize probably my favorite part of this district, which is our kids. We're coming at the end of one of the hardest years I think any of them are gonna go through. And to look at the bravery and the strength of each one, coming back to school half the year with masks, not knowing, now we're learning on computers. I wouldn't have been able to do it, let's just put it that way. And it amazes me, it makes me so happy to see these kids. To see them succeed, to see them flourish. And I can honestly say, none of them would have that opportunity without teachers who did provide stability, such as our thirty-year. And that's staff, across the board, staff and teachers, who provide that stability, who provide that face, who, who students know when they walk into the school and say, hey, I know you from last year, or you were my brother's teacher back when he was in fourth grade. Which, which really brings me to have to take a moment to say thank you to two of the retirees on the twenty-twenty-one list, Mr. J. Smith and Mr. Jeffrey Steenerson, both of which, I have to say, I'm sad to see them leave, they both encouraged myself. They taught me. Mr. Smith believed in me in eighth grade that I could put myself anywhere I wanted to go. And without him, would I ever, ever gotten that mentality that I can do whatever I wanna do? So, looking back, I think this district has amazing teachers who build amazing foundations for our students, and we've, we've gotta support them. We, we have to be the driving force to remind them that they have somebody behind their back. Thirty-six students was an inch, and I feel like we're taking a mile, which is unacceptable. But I, I do want to extend my gratitude to every student, to every employee in this district, and tell everybody, thank you for making twenty-twenty-two amazing. And I cannot wait to see what twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three holds, so thank you and I'll keep it there.
Okay, thank you. So, there is no te- ti- tired, like the end of the teach, teacher time, tired. You know, I was blessed, I had a good class, but even I'm like, let's go, let's get this show on the road, cuz I need a break. It wasn't a ju- adjustment, I couldn't believe the routines I had had for years, I forgot how to do them. It was like, how did we do that, you know, distance learning, it's, it's still showing, showing its effects. You know, no matter how hard we try, there's still gonna be lasting effects, you know. But I think go home, going back into the class was the best thing, to start to rebuild, you know, what distance learning tried to mess up. I, I am saddened by what happened to, in Tex- Texas, like I couldn't even believe, leave it, I was in a me- meeting. And then I thought how our schools now have those buzz and things, which I, I think are great. I wanna thank, thank, you know, Dr. Mitch Mitchell for insisting those go in, trying to put those in. I think it's, I wish my, my school had had that, you know, cuz the offices is the front, frontline. And now they've got some, something. I got to go to Vic- Victoria, Mc- McGath, Gathens in Interna- National Night, which was really great, I mean, seeing the kids dance, you know, it was awesome. There was tons of food and there were tons of families, like I had to park out in the dirt, like down, down. I mean, it was really great to see the community come together, you know, the parents helped make the costumes. It was, it was a wonderful thing to see, and I was, I was pri- privileged to, to be a, e- able to, to go, and I also went down to the fair last Sa- Saturday. And I with witnessed Doc, Dr. Mitch Mitchell get soup superintendent of the year award by the IE SEEM. And I know what they do, but I don't know what it stands for, could you explain that just a little bit, real, real quick?
So SEEM is a collaborative, economic collaborative led by retired county superintendent, Dr. Judy White. And they just acknowledged teachers and school, and school leaders and central office staff, central office staff, as well as a superintendent from San Fernando County, as well as one from Riverside County, and we were honored at the Ella Fair, so it was fun, fun treat and good to see folks.
Yes, it was, you know, and, and a few, few of those who, who were on, honored, I kinda felt good cuz they, they thanked Doc, Dr. Mitch Mitchell for ment- mentoring them and helping them, so. And though it was hot, I did get hot and sweaty there, so, um. But I, I look for, forward to the promote motions and the graduations, cuz we didn't get, get to do that. And I even have a hat now, so if we're out in the sun, cuz I don't do well in direct heat, I'll wolf. So, all right, so that's all I have to say, and I just wanna thank you, so let, let's go on to number twelve, which is the pub- public hea- hearing and sun, sun- sunshine propos- posals. Twelve point zero zero one, pub- public hea- hearings, sunshine proposal for negotiations with Odd, Oddalon, Lonto District T- Teachers Association. Do we need that explanation or just go straight to?
No, I think you can gavel in, and we're happy to provide, you heard it in closed session, board, so if there's more questions, we certainly can ask, or I'll ask you gavel in, open.
Okay, so we'll start, start the time at eight twenty-six.
And I don't have any speakers that have asked to speak.
Yeah, I'll give them a minute. Okay, since I don't think there's an, anyone on Zoom raising their hands about this. So, okay, I will close this at eight twenty-seven. Okay, go, going on to twelve point zero, twelve point zero zero two, sun- sunshine proposal and negotiations with the Odd, Oddalon, Lonto District T- Teachers Association. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
My motion?
Okay, got a mo- motion from Eck, Eckus, and I need a sec, second.
La French, a second.
Thank you, and any discussion? Calling for the vote?
Aye.
Trusty La French?
La French, aye.
Trusty Turner?
Aye.
Trusty Webster?
Aye.
Trusty Benz? Benz, aye, mo- motion pass- passes five zero. Okay, go, going on to twelve point zero three, pub- public hea- hearing, sun- sunshine propos- posals for negotiations with California School Employees Association, chapter four hundred fifty-one. And this will start at eight twenty-eight. Okay, hearing done, and there's none on Zoom, so I'll clo- close this at eight twenty-nine. All right, go, going on to twelve point zero four, sun- sunshine proposal for negotiations with California School Employees Association Chap- Chapter four fifty-one. Can, can I get a mo- motion to approve?
My motion?
Okay, and I need a sec, second?
La French, a second.
Thank you, can we get a vote?
Trusty Eckes?
Aye.
Trusty La French?
La French, aye.
Trusty Turner?
Aye.
Trusty Webster?
Aye.
Trusty Benz?
Benz, aye, motion passes five zero. Okay, here we go with the twelve point zero zero five, biz, biz, business ser- services, pub- public hea- hearing on the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-three, did develop developer fees, just justification, study and res- resolution, num- number twon- twenty-one, point twenty-two, point third, thirty-two. Just, oh, open it up?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to o- open it up at eight, eight-third, thirty.
Trustees, do you have any que-questions?
Do you have anybody on Zoom?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'll clo-close it at eight-third, thirty-one. Okay, go, going on to adopt option of the men-minutes, uh, boardman minutes. Uh, prove as writ-written and or-order filled, re-rare-regular board me-meeting of May tenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh, can I get a mo-motion to approve?
And this.
Okay, and we need a sec-second.
I'll second, so we can go into discussion.
Okay, we're open for discuss discussion.
Okay, I would like us to table these minutes to the next board minute-meeting, I need to read. Something was brought to my attention that I need to, uh, review again. So if we can, um, table those approval of those minutes until then.
Okay.
I amend my motion to table.
And I'm in my second.
And can we get a vote?
Trustee Ekus.
Aye.
Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
Aye.
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Um, Benz, aye. Mo-motion pa-passes five zero zero. Okay, go, going on to the consent agenda, we are ta-taking i-items for fourteen point zero two through four-fourteen point twenty-one. Does an, any trustee want to pull an item?
Okay, I'll pull fourteen oh-two. Fourteen oh-eight. Fourteen twenty.
And what else?
Twenty.
Twenty and two.
Okay, and I'd like to pull fourteen oh-four and fourteen oh-nine.
Okay, fourteen. Fourteen oh-four. And fourteen oh-nine. And I pull fourteen oh-six. Fourteen twelve. And that's it. Anyone else? Okay, I have none. So, we are approving all mine minus four-fourteen point zero two. Fourteen point zero four, fourteen point zero six, fourteen point zero eight. Fourteen point zero nine, fourteen point twelve, fourteen point twenty. Can I get a mo-motion to approve the remaining agenda items?
Ekus, my motion.
And can I get a sec-second?
I second.
And now we need a vote.
Trustee Ekus.
Aye.
Trustee La French. Pull fourteen twenty, I'm sorry.
It, it's pulled.
Okay, aye. Trustee Turner.
Aye.
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, aye, motion passes five zero zero. Okay, let's, let's go on to fort-fourteen point zero two. I need a mo-mo-motion to approve.
Left French a motion.
I need a sec-second. Benz, I sec-second, we're open for discuss discussion.
I, I pulled this, I, I only have two items on, um. The conference approval, um, and that's, uh. A-A-S-A and the school, the school superintendent's association. Um, I pulled this item, looking at the agenda item, I know when Dr. Mitchell brought this to the board's attention, you know, I. I had questions regarding it and I still have questions now. Um, I can't, I cannot deny our assistant superintendents from attending this, but I feel that this is not a conference, this is, uh. Educational development to, to become a superintendent. That is not something that this district is looking for right now, we have a superintendent, so, and for the board to pay for it. I believe that it's against the public funds, so I will not be able to, um, approve this item. It's a year long and, um. According to the information that was given to the board. It's two in-person meetings and at the UC, um, university campus and then one in San Antonio. And that, um, the courses is every Monday from four-thirty to six-thirty. So, that's not a regular conference attendance, in my opinion, so I. Wanted to make comments on that, but I will not be approving this one, thank you.
So was your que- question on how it was agendized?
My question is, I believe that we have a superintendent and, um. You know, if it was something pertaining to their current job, then yes, I would, you know, see that training is necessary. But we have a superintendent and, um. I cannot see paying seven thousand dollars to train a, a person to move on to another district to become a superintendent.
Anyone else?
Um, so I reached out earlier, um, in regards to this agenda item, whether or not this was agendized correctly or not. And quite frankly, if it was. I, I would almost feel better tabling it because I, I feel bad for the. The other, um, conferences that did properly bring their, their conferences to the board. Um, I, I do agree, quick question, um, what is Title II fund and what, um. Monies are in it?
Title II funds are dedicated specifically for school training of school administrators. This item is properly, uh, agendized, it is a training. Uh, just like we said, uh, several of our administrators to a year-long training called NISSL. And they just graduated from that, uh, no different than we, uh, have consultants. That will take a year long to train teachers at our schools, so Title II funds can only be spent on training administrators, if we don't use it, we lose it. Uh, this is specifically to better the, uh, capacity of, of, of senior leaders and so. On, on the issue of preparing for the next job, superintendent is in their title. Uh, if you look at their job duties, they are responsible for managing aspects of the board, helping develop strategic planning, vision. And so on and so forth, and so, uh, these are trained specifically targeting senior leaders and as, uh, who are responsible for running the school district. And so the skills that they learn will, will, will build their capacity to assist me in, in doing that. Uh, it's not just job preparation for the next job, but on that case, we do also provide. Training for up-and-coming, rising administrators in our own district that then go on to be administrators, not only in our own district, but other districts. We provide trainings for principals that move on to other districts as well and so, um. The idea that, uh. The, the idea is that to build capacity for all of our staff to better the jobs that they're in now. And, uh, and, and, uh, and add value to the district they're in now. Um, and so that's, that's the purpose of this, it's not, you can't, there is no training to get you the next job. It's all of your experiences that, uh, combine that make you eligible for, for future jobs. And we do that for our teachers, our classified staff, our board, we spend almost a hundred thousand this year on board conferences and trainings as well. Make trainings and so on and so forth, which adds to value and capacity of you in your current leadership role.
Okay, on that note, board members, yes, we go to training, but we don't let it interfere with our job as a board member. Um, I have been told by my superintendent that our assistant supes are too busy to talk to me as a board member. Therefore, I cannot do my job as a board member, so, um, hearing that. And being told that I, people are too busy to help me do my job as a board member concerns me. If they're gonna be taking on, uh, going to school, um, uh, if they're so busy that they can't help a board member do their everyday job. Going to school concerns me, so I have kind of an issue with that. At the same time, I've been a board member for a long time and out of transparency, um, to the public. Because this is taxpayer money, I don't care what fund it comes out of. I believe it needs to be agendized separately with full disclosure, explanation, everything. So that the public understands what is being paid for with their tax money. Throwing it on an agenda under consent is not normal in my eyes. We have always been taught through CSBA consent is for every day, every day in and out, regular business. Anything that is different, special, or may cause, um, concern or controversy to the public. Should be put on an agenda item with full detail. Um, having this in here looks, I, I'm not seeing the transparency to the public. So, and again, like I said, I need to have superintendents that have time. To talk to a board member so that I can get my information to do my job as a board member. Um, i-if, I don't know, I, I think I'm just gonna leave it at there. Um, I'm okay with, uh, tabling this and being, have it being brought back as a separate agenda item in the future. Because I do not wanna hold up the other conferences that are going on, so I would be more than happy to approve, change, change the. Hopefully, change the, the vote tonight to approve the other conferences. But those two, um, in particular, again, I would like it to be brought back as an agenda item, uh, with full detail. So that we can have transparency for the public.
Okay, I'm unclear, so you want more information on this one?
No, I want it brought back as a regular agenda item under new business or something to that effect. And, uh, I would like the board to table that and have it brought back as a regular agenda item, not on consent. And then for us to change the vote to accept these other, um, conferences so that these people don't get held up going to their conferences.
Well.
So I, I'll, I'll make a new motion that we do approve the other conferences. But to have tabled and brought back, uh, the business services, academic services, um, A-A-S-A. The School Superintendent, um, Association, uh, virtual, uh, registration, uh, title to fund. With full detail, uh, for us in the public.
I second that motion.
Also, can I have a vote, please?
Yes, trustee Ekus.
Aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Aye.
Trustee Webster.
Aye.
Trustee Benz.
Benz name. Mo-mo-motion pa-passes four-one. Okay, go, going on to fort-fourteen point zero four. Biz-business ser-services, uh, peru-approval of MNGM and associate-associates marine. More Maureen G. Mulve-Veeny as the back-to-school spe-speaker for the child-child new nutrition staff meet. Meeting on Aug-August fourth, twenty twenty-two at the cost of seven thousand, thousand five hun-hundred. Can, can I get a mo-motion to, to approve?
I motion to approve.
Thank you.
I motion for discussion.
Well, we're, we're open, so we can, you know.
No, you gotta get a first and a second, so I'm seconding it for discussion.
Well, I. Fine.
What, what am I doing wrong?
Well, no, because I, I could have just sec, so, so I can did and then we can get a discuss discussion, but we're open for discussion.
Going.
Here we go.
Okay, the reason why I pulled this was because I had questions, first of all, after reading the, um, uh, agreement, the contract agreement. They had to give her fifty percent down to reserve her, and this was back in April, was there already money given to her to reserve her?
Mr. Kraus can answer that.
Uh, thank you, uh, trustee Ekus for that question, even though the agreement does say that we as a district do not put down a down payment on that, so she did not receive any funds. Um, until potential board approval this evening.
Okay, that's good to know, okay, and then, um, what was my other question? Okay, uh, the reason why I'm asking is cuz I thought maybe I saw it on the purchase orders, uh, the MGM really stood out to me. Um, on our last purchase order, so to your knowledge, she has not been given any money that you know of.
Not to my knowledge, but I definitely will also, uh, check into that as well, but I'm not aware that, uh, any organization such as this one, uh, even if they require it. Uh, our district without board approval really can't give them any money.
Right, I agree, okay, thank you, that was my question.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it, in the included information on this agenda item, they have program blurbs. Together we'll create the new normal, the Magic Kingdom, et cetera, are these the? Topics they're gonna be touching down on, or do we have a, a itinerary list, I mean. I wanna make sure that we're getting seventy-five hundred dollars worth of keynote speaking.
Yes, so she'll be with us the full day and, uh, child nutrition services director will have a full agenda with, shared with the board.
I had another question, um, I used to work for Child Nutrition Services back in the day and I don't know if times have changed, but we never had a keynote speaker. Um, to me, this is new, I'm kinda surprised and I thought I read or heard somewhere that we do this every year. And again, I'm, I'm not familiar with this, we haven't been doing keynote speakers until maybe the last year. And I don't remember CNS having a keynote speaker.
Yes, uh, they had a great one last year, um, I sent pictures to the board, uh, it's, it's good to pull their full staff together because. The CNS staff works across several schools and so it's, it's the one opportunity in the beginning of the year to pull the full team together in one area. Do team building, uh, give direction, Julie is able to give direction. Uh, new products, new trainings and so on and so forth, and also just build team and relationship, so last year she had a great speaker. Uh, this year, uh, she has another great agenda planned with this speaker.
And it's coming out of the general fund?
Yeah, but kind of a pastor, go ahead, Mr. Kraus.
Yes, it, it, the state has allocated what we call the kitchen infrastructure grants to all districts in the state, we didn't have to do anything, they just allocated it from their budget. Um, usually it would go into Fund thirteen, which is our cafeteria fund, but the state has dictated that it comes through Fund oh-one, but as a sub-resource. And so although it is coming out of Fund oh-one, it is restricted monies that the state said, uh, there's two parts of that money. Professional development, which this would be considered part of, and then, uh, updating our kitchens such as our equipment. And so that, to the two parts of the grant, this is the first part, the professional development that we're required to provide to our CNS staff, uh, as part of the grant.
So you're saying that money could be used for something else in the kitchen?
No, the allocation, I believe we received about two-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, but about forty-five thousand of that is specifically allocated by the state for professional development. And district's discretion as to what that professional development looks like, and so our director of CNS Julie was able to get a speaker that. Would qualify as professional development, she's a nationally-known speaker that will talk about the child nutrition standards and, and again, we'll get, we'll get the board. And, and again, we'll get, we'll get the board that agenda, but the rest of that, the other two-hundred-and-forty thousand will be used district-wide to upgrade our equipment in all of our cafeteria kitchens.
Yeah, like I said, I'm not used to get these guest speakers, and they're very expensive. I mean, honestly, I, I don't know too many people who make, you know, seven thousand a day. I don't know. I, I don't know how I feel about that. Like I said, I used to work in the kitchen, and we were a great team. We worked together. We didn't need a guest speaker to come in and help motivate us, but I know times have changed, but I don't know. Just as a board member, I'm having issues with all these guest speakers that are so highly paid. But that's, that's me. Okay, thank you. I have no more questions.
Could we request a presentation by Ms. Nichols to this board?
Ms., oh, Ms. Nichols.
Julie?
Oh, certainly. Well, what topic would you like?
I, I was curious if we could table this and have her do a presentation for the board's understanding.
Certainly.
I'm, I'm sorry, um, you know, CNS wants to do a team building thing with the speak speaker. And I, I honestly don't see why we are picking at it. I'm sorry, I can't think of another word, but. I think, you know, C, 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 CNS, they work, work hard dur- dur- during the, the pandemic. They made lunch, lunches and break, breakfast. They still work the whole time, you know, not, not to lessen and anyone else. But here they are trying to build, you know, do something to help, you know, help them out. It helps them be a team instead of, okay, just go, go to work. So we're just delaying this for them, and then this person, you know, I just. I don't see a problem with it. So that's my point, but whatever the board wants. So what would the board like to do?
I would like to go on and vote on it.
And are we voting? What, what are we vote, voting for?
Who motion to approve?
La French mo- mo- motion to, to approve you mo- motion for de- discuss- discussion.
Okay, then I'd like to change my motion to table. Until we get a presentation from CNS.
Well, then I need, well, it's kind of weird because we got one to approve, one to table. It's kind of like.
Yeah, so I need somebody, if anybody wants to help me table this, if Ms. La French wants to take back her amendment to join mine, that's how it works.
Or can I do my mo- motion to approve? I can do a motion to approve. I was about, about to.
Well, you're supposed to facilitate the meeting as the board president, so you're supposed to let your board members do what they need to do. And I'm doing that right now, and I'm waiting to see if Ms. French wants to change her motion to agree with me at the, at this time. You're not supposed to get involved at this point. We're supposed to work this out or the board, and then at the end, you can do what you need to do.
Okay, but, but I can also motion to.
You're supposed to always vote last, unless I'm mistaken. Board president always votes last. So for you to try to get involved right now is not protocol. I, we need to hear from Ms. French. If she doesn't want to, and she wants to stick with her vote, then we move forward as a board.
Okay. Okay, so.
So at this time, if you.
At this time, I'd like to say that I want the. My vote are my, it still stands the same way. I would like to see them have the guest speaker for the nutrition staff.
Okay, do any other board members want this table? If not, then you move, then you would proceed.
I would like to say something. I, I agree with President Benz. As school service workers have worked hard over the past two years, not that it, no, everyone else didn't, but they were out there. Every day handing out three meals a day to our families and, you know. I, I believe that this author, she's the author of Chicken Soup for Teacher's Soul. I think this will be fabulous. You know, the, 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 the cost is high. I understand that. But I think that this will be a special moment for them to hear a guest speaker, you know, talking about feeding our children. And maybe giving some, you know, some direction or some recommendations on how to make the kids eat their lunch. And like it, and maybe for the, the staff to make it better for them. So I, I, I think that this is something that will benefit, you know, our full-service professionals and, and. Because I work with our babies, and they feed our kids every day. So I would like for them to have an opportunity to receive. A good day, sit back and enjoy. I, I like that. I mean, we spent twelve thousand dollars on the bus to go to a science camp where we could have used our buses. This is seven thousand dollars. So, yeah.
Okay, then we can just move forward and vote now.
Okay, so let's have a mo- vote to approve four, fourteen point zero four, please.
I motion to, I motion to.
Oh, no, we can just vote now.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Did you guys hear me?
Yes.
I had you. Okay, so the motion is from La French and seconded by trustee Ekis. I'll go ahead and I'll take the vote. Trustee Ekis. Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster. Trustee Benz. Benz, I, and I, I didn't hear trustee Ek- Ekis' vote.
I voted nay.
Okay, sorry, I didn't hear it. I'm sorry, sir.
I don't know, nobody heard that.
I did not hear it. I'm sorry. Okay, so the mo- mo- motion pa- passes for one. Okay, go, going on to four, fourteen point zero six. Approval of dot, doc hub subscription renew, new old quote for electronic sig- sig- signature. Software for five hun- hundred u- users as, at the cost of two thousand, four hundred dollars for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Webster motions to approve.
I can say second.
Okay, we're open for discussion, discussion.
I believe I pulled this one. Reason being is. I wanted to know who did the negotiations on this contract.
Mr. Kraus.
Yes, thank you. So our IT staff worked in conjunction with myself, and we worked with DocCo. Because originally, as the item came to the board on May tenth for a hundred licenses at around five thousand, nine hundred ninety-eight dollars. And one thing that I believe in is that in education, we should really try to negotiate as much of a discount as we can with vendors. Because we are in the, in the business of educating our children, and the more dollars we can spend towards that, and the less towards vendors. Something that we embrace, and so we really had a discussion with them, and we're able to get it down. So now we have five hundred licenses for half the cost of what one hundred licenses were going to cost us originally. So we're excited to be able to get that and bring it back to the board for potential approval this evening.
Thank you. I do want to go and just say for a moment that I appreciate you and your staff, sir. And being able to bring this back for a lower price. Thank you for taking that time. And that was all I needed.
Okay, um, can we call for the vote?
Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, go, going on to four, fourteen point zero eight. Business ser- services of peru approval of a quote with the Cal- California School Boards Assos- Association. For a vert- virtual po- policy re- review of dis- district board po- policies for a cost of twelve thousand, thousand, ten doll- dollars. Can I get a motion to approve?
I motion.
I second.
Okay, now we're open for discuss- discussion.
I pulled this item in the past when California school boards come in to look at our policies. The board has always been a part of that process, looking at the information that was given to the board. And maybe I'm wrong. Is there something in this agenda item that will allow the board to should in?
Yes, I thank you, trustee Turner. Yes, it's a word, words generally says the district that, that's the board. So absolutely, we want to have you involved in this process. And so we, it's a bland kind of write-up, but when it says district, that's me, that means the board.
Okay, so if approved, when will CSBA come in? And it's virtual? It's a virtual policy review.
Yes, and so we will, we will begin to craft out those dates along with the board and CSBA to see what works.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's all I have on that.
Are there, and any other ques- questions?
Yeah, in the past, we did this in person. Is there a reason why they can't come?
Due to COVID and short staffing was one of the reasons that when we were negotiating with them on this, that they gave. It's much easier at this time for them to do it virtually, and as Dr. Mitchell stated, we'll work with them on their dates and times as well with the board.
Okay, thank you.
I, I do have another question. I know that a lot of our policies, because of Gamut online, has not been updated. But the board has changed policies and made, we made changes to our policies. Will the board get copies of those changes in advance so we can make changes when CSBA come in and recommend changes at that time?
Yes, and so I, I'm, I've been made aware that the board did some significant work that was not reflected on gamut. So we're gonna kind of start over with that and then ask CSBA to assist us with all the, you know, as you know, the laws change almost every other week. And so we just want them to help us jumpstart this process and start getting our policies up to date. But we will start with what was done by the board and was not, and because even some of those policies that the board updated may have changed as well, too. So we kind of want to almost reset a little bit, trustee Turner, and start from there and start with what we've done and make sure that we can stay up to date once we get caught up.
Okay, so we're gonna go back and look at the board agendas a minute to see what the board has already approved.
Yes, I've already asked, because I'm gonna start pulling those. Yep, okay, thank you.
Okay, any other quick questions? Can we have a vote?
Trustee Ekis. Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster.
Nay.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes for one. Go, going on to four, fourteen point zero, zero nine. Approval of purch- purchase ord- orders and warrant re-report. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion.
Okay, and I need a sec- sec- second. Thank you. Now we're, we're open for de- discussion, discussion.
I pulled this because I wanted to vote separately on it. I had way too many questions to ask and wasn't able to do that, so I pulled it. So I'm okay with us just voting on it.
Okay. Any other quick questions? Can I get a vote?
Trustee Ekis.
Nay.
Trustee La French.
I.
Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes for one. Okay, go, going on to four, fourteen point twelve. Accept, acceptance of cert- certificated employee res- resignation. Can I get a motion to approve?
I motion.
And can I get a sec- second? Thank you. Now we're op- open for de- discussion, discussion.
I think you pulled this.
Yes, Webster, this, this one's yours.
I did. I, you know, I, I keep seeing a lot of resignations. I guess I just wanted to come back and, and touch down on. Where we were at with the exit interviews, or if we're, we're developing any, any idea of how to go about those.
Yes, so we do have those in place. I did ask staff, and I informed you in your email to you today that we would present that summary and analysis at the next board meeting.
Okay, thank you. And any other que- questions?
Um, in the future, when writing an agenda item, can you say that exit interviews were conducted? To on these employees, you don't have to say what it was, but just say that it was done, so we'll know.
Happy to, thank you.
Can I get a vote, please? Trustee Ekis.
I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I, motion pa- passes five zero. Okay, go, going on to four, fourteen point twenty. Un- unpaid med, medical leave of abs- absence. I need a mo- motion. Okay, are, are we motioning to approve or to? Discussion, okay. Okay, and I need a sec- second. Benz, I sec- second for de- discussion, discussion. Okay, now we are open for discussion.
Okay, I pulled this item, you know, we briefly talked about it in close session, and. I just want to say that, you know, this employee has been with us for twenty-four years and has given his service, and has been a stellar employee. And it was in a car accident, and, you know, he's out. And I know, and knowing this employee, I know that if he wasn't hurt, he would be here today, probably in this boardroom, walking around saying if everything is okay. So to just put him out like that. And treat him like, okay, you're twenty-four years, it's up, you know, thank you for your service, but goodbye. You know, we talk about us being a family and caring about each other, and just to, just take, take, act like we don't care. Or we don't care about his family or him, you know, and I do know that if the medical is taken away, you know, it costs a problem. So I'm saying that we look at this carefully and, you know, take care of the people that's taking care of us over the years, you know, and. And not be so quick to just let him go, you know, unless I feel about that.
Okay, um. You know, I do understand, I just, you know, this is do- 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 delayed. And somebody is having to do this first person's job. And they've been off work for over a year, and I understand they're in an accident, but may, may, maybe they may need to look at long-term.
Board, can I interrupt you? Board, I just want to caution the board about personnel matters being discussed in open. Medical, medical personnel, those kinds of things should be safe for close session. Thank you. Just want to caution the board.
I call for the vote.
What are we vote, voting on?
Whatever people want to vote.
I vote to deny the recommendation to put this person on a thirty-nine month lead.
So the, the most, the recommendation is to deny from staff.
Okay, well, I motion.
To approve his requested medical.
Approve his request for an extension of their medical lead.
There you go.
Okay, that's what I do, that's what I motion.
Webster seconds.
Okay, so you're gonna have to back up with me. We had a vote, two votes to open discussion and go forward. Okay, so you're going to have to back up with me. We had a vote, two votes to open discussion and go forward. Now we're having an amended motion and what is that?
I don't think that it was motion to approve, it was a motion to discuss.
Yeah, but technically it's to talk about it and to accept what is already there. And then we would move forward and just vote yes or no. So if I think if you want to amend it, you have to deny the first vote and then go forward with the new vote. Am I correct, Z?
Yeah.
Okay.
So the first people who voted, we can either go with that and just say yes or no. Or we send them amended and then have a new. Right.
Okay.
So is that where we're at right now?
Right, who motioned? I think.
La French.
Motion for this discussion.
Then Benz, and so now we're doing a substitute motion by trustee Turner, seconded by trustee Webster to approve the request for extension.
Okay, gotcha. And that's what we're voting on.
That is correct.
Okay, gotcha.
I'll go ahead and I'll take the vote. Trustee Akas.
I.
Trustee La French.
La French, I.
Trustee Turner.
Trustee Turner, I.
Trustee Webster.
I.
Trustee Benz. Benz, nae. Mo- motion passes for, well, the motion that's the substitute motion passes for one, correct? Okay, and I believe that's the end of consent agenda. We made it in one piece. Let's go on to sixteen sixteen point zero zero one staff business, business re- services. Presentation of Governor New Newsom's May re revised for the 2022 23 proposed state budget.
I thank you, trustee business. So, but as you know, we're at that time of year where the government comes out and makes a projection on the hours revision to his January budget and we're looking forecasting and projecting for next year. And so we were all in attendance and we always ask Mr. Kraus to come in and give us the highlights of that presentation. So I'll turn over Mr. Kraus, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchell. I'm going to share my screen.
That is correct, trustee La French. We are at nine thirteen, so we would need to vote to extend the meeting.
I'll motion to extend it, I guess, what, another hour?
I second. Okay, motion by Akas, second by Turner to go on for another hour. Okay, can we get a vote?
Trustee Akas.
I.
Trustee La French. Trustee Turner.
I.
Trustee Webster.
Nay.
Trustee Benz.
Benz, I. Mo- low motion pass passes three two.
Great, thank you. Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Mitchell, cabinet, members of the community that are with us on Zoom and those of you that are here with us in person this evening. As Dr. Mitchell stated, every May, the governor presents his newly revised proposed budget. He comes out in January with his first proposal and then in May comes out with his second proposal for the next coming year. So this will be for the 22 23 school year. And just to give you a few highlights, this is the last step that the governor does before he actually has a final budget that he will sign in June. And it's not much different than the process that a district undertakes when the budget for the school district is brought before the board for adoption in June as well. And so this is just part of the process. What will happen now between now and about June fifteenth, the governor and the legislature will negotiate some more about what things they would like to finalize in the budget. And then legislature will pass it or they won't get paid. And then the governor has to sign it. And so that's where we're at as far as the next steps in the May revision. So here's some of the highlights you'll see this evening. As you can see there, we'll be talking about inflation, some risks to the budget, topics such as the local control funding formula, our ADA, average daily attendance, projected cost of living, the COLA, some information about universal TK in there, some updates on our child nutrition, facilities, transportation, a person's STIRS rates updates, and then what is not in the May revision. And so one of the things that we all are feeling right now is the rate of inflation because everything we purchase when we go to the grocery store or fuel has risen, the prices have risen dramatically. We feel it here at the district level with our fuel for our transportation department. We see it in CNS with our cost of food that we are purchasing. And so you can see the projected inflation rate has been steadily climbing and it's not coming down anytime soon according to projections. It's currently at eight point three percent in the month of April. And so that does affect our expenditures, not only in this current year, but in the multi-year projection. And also, one of the things that has happened with the minimum wage is that it increased every January and there's predictions that it will continue to rise based on the rate of inflation. It's directly tied to the governor's proposal to increase the minimum wage. So whatever some of the risks that we can see here at the state level, but also at the district level. Well, the economy is not doing so well right now. There's a lot of risks to our economy because of what's going on. The inflation fears are out there. There's a lot of supply chain bottlenecks. One of the things that we see in our supplies, when we order supplies from just about every vendor, is they pretty much tell us now and we've come to expect that there could be a delay, whether it's the shipping containers coming from overseas, whether it's the trucking, shipping in the United States. So we we are aware of that, but also the stock market is volatile. And so that's one of the areas that a lot of the income for the state of California comes from is capital gains taxes on stock market increases. But if the stock market's going down, there's less taxes going into the state coffers. And then also the other thing that we see is conflicts overseas, as an example. School services presented the Ukraine Russian war. And also there could be surges in COVID nineteen cases that were seen in various parts of the country. So these are some of the risks that we see to the budget and long term. One of the other highlights of the May revision that they updated was the average reserve levels for school districts. You can see there in the middle for unified school districts, it's around twenty two point three six percent and twenty one twenty two. And then elementary, which we would qualify under, is twenty six percent. So that's the statewide averages. You see that for the unrestricted reserve levels. And so this is just a synopsis of across the state with the over twelve hundred school districts in various categories, what the average reserve levels are. And so they've been able to build those up over the last few years to those percentages. Now here is a slide that talks about the local control funding formula. That is how a district is funded, including ourselves. We have a base grant, as you can see at the top there. And then you can see what they're predicting for next year, a six point five six percent COLA. I'll talk about that in a minute on a future slide, but that's what they're predicting. So you get additional five hundred and thirty one dollars save for K three. And then there are other add-ons, as you can see there, grade span adjustment there of nine hundred and twenty five, adjusted base grant, and then if you are supplemental and concentration district, of which we are, we receive additional funding per ADA there at the bottom, so you can see those amounts as well. And so it varies by district and it varies by category, but this is just a over broad view of the funding formula that's being proposed for next year. And again, you can see here some of the things in the May revision right there at the top that they talked about. The May revision, two point one billion in ongoing money for the general fund for the state, which would then trickle down to the districts. There are competing bills in the assembly, fifteen percent COLA, for example, of one assembly member, another one in the senate, five billion, growing to ten billion by twenty four twenty five. So the bottom two are just to give you an idea of competing bills that are being negotiated right now that may or may not make it out of the assembly or senate to also potentially supplement funding for school districts. Another interesting concept that the governor's proposing is discretionary block grant, which we haven't seen in a long time. And on the upper left there, it talks about equates to approximately fifteen hundred dollars per ADA. So whatever a district's ADA is, they potentially could receive fifteen hundred dollars per that ADA. And so you take the ADA number, for example, if it were seven thousand, multiply times fifteen hundred and you can kind of estimate what a district could receive based on their ADA. And so a lot of this is just going into more detail about that, but this is a proposal of one-time funding that the governor is proposing for districts across the state. Again, it's not signed into law until the final bills are done and then we'll see if it makes it there or not. Now here is where there's a little bit of danger and we've seen this statewide is the ADA cliff. As you can see on the left there, this is our decline in enrollment statewide. And you can see there, we're down more than two hundred and seventy thousand children over two years. And historically, you wouldn't see that over thirteen years. So in two years, we've declined what a thirteen year decline would normally be. So two hundred and seventy thousand students statewide. We don't know where they're going, but they are leaving districts across the state from NorCal to SoCal and in between. And so that's one of the things that we are monitoring because it that's how districts are funded, is their ADA. And then also you can see on the right side, it talks about some of the reasons ADA is also lowered. Quarantine illness independent study, homework not returned in a matter, audit findings on the rise because of the students that are not showing up or still on the books, but we don't know where they went. And so that's one of the things that all districts are actively trying to figure out where the student's going and bring them back. And so what I did was then I added a slide in here and I apologize, I added this late because I was waiting on a CDE to get this information to us. But this shows you the enrollment for our district historically, broken down by the groups. And you can see there from fifteen sixteen all the way to your left side, to all the way to twenty one twenty two on the right side. We have been declining. At first, it wasn't so much in fifteen sixteen sixteen seventeen, but then it dropped in eighteen nineteen, dropped again in nineteen twenty, twenty twenty one and twenty one twenty two. So you can see there, we're now currently last October at about seven thousand eight hundred and six when we did our census day in October. So you can see the steady decline in enrollment in our district as well as statewide as we move forward. And that's one thing we definitely have to monitor because again, our enrollment, our ADA are very important to our data and how we budget. So there's a couple of solutions, just real quick. The governor had talked about using the prior year ADA or using a rolling average. So over the last three years, you would take your ADA for this year, last year and the year before, divide them up by three and then get your average. That's a bill that has not been signed yet. They're working on that as a potential solution to it. Another solution is looking at the attendance yield, the attendance to enrollment ratio. And so again, this language is not present in any active bill. It is just something that has been proposed. We're not sure until the actual budget bill is signed, what will be in there. But as we move forward in creating the adopted budget, which we've been doing, staff has been working on for several months now, we have to kind of guess as to what the governor is going to finally sign into law. So in June fourteenth, when the first blush of the adopted budget comes before the board, we will work with our county office of ed to put in there what they recommend the language is we use for our our multi-year projections. Here's where the cost of living, as you can see here, to try to deflect from the inflation rate. So we see these inflation rate at over eight percent. So the governor said, hey, we need to really give a higher cost of living to the districts to be able to try to offset that. So in twenty two twenty three, you can see there in January, he proposed five point three percent. Now he's upgraded it to six point five percent and it may even be higher when the final budget is signed at the state level. And then in the multi-year projection, you can see there for twenty three twenty four, it's now at five point three percent. And then in twenty four twenty five, four percent. So the governor has recognized that inflation is really taking its toll on districts and he needed to somehow try to offset that, although it'd be nice to see eight percent in there to offset the eight percent inflation rate. But we're happy with what is being proposed at the cost of living. Some quick information on universal TK. I know that Dr. Dweisin and her team are working on this, but they they're proposing universal TK and funding for that, so it will be coming. And this is, these are just slides to talk about that because as a, on the fiscal side, we have to look at the funding that will come from the state as well as potentially adding facilities for the TK classrooms. And then again, this slide just talks about the TK staffing that there will be potentially a cost to as we move forward and work with Mr. Moran and his team on potentially what that will look like. And so the governor's recognized that there needs to be potentially funding to offset the increased staffing. Child nutrition, great news. Beginning in twenty two twenty three, all districts are required to provide two free meals per day to any student who requests a meal. So if you want a meal, you just gotta, you really don't even have to request, you just have to go to the line and show up. So in our district, you just start next year and it's been going on like that, but now they're actually going to continue funding it. So that was their big question, would they fund it next year? And in this proposal, yes, they will fund that. So we're excited about that. Deferred maintenance, as you know, all districts have deferred maintenance things that they put off because they didn't have funding. So he's, the governor's proposing one point seven billion, which does not go a lot of, doesn't go a long way in the state with twelve hundred districts, but it's something better than nothing. So we're excited to potentially see something like that as far as helping us offset our deferred maintenance that Mr. Crenshaw in the M and O department, his team actively work on on a daily basis. And then facilities, there's some money potentially for facilities that they will throw at districts potentially if it gets signed into law. Transportation is same thing. They want to have free transportation, which we already have as a district, but they want to fund the transportation cost for all districts. So for example, if our cost of fuel increase, they don't want us to have to use general fund money. They want to be able to fund that increase for the transportation department. So that's a proposal the governor is looking at so that it would not impact our general fund for our transportation services. Here's a huge hit that we've seen and we know it's coming and here's just some percentages to show you. PERS is going up from twenty five point three percent in twenty two twenty three, all the way to twenty two point six in twenty six twenty seven. And then the STIRS rate, we are very thankful that at this time, they are projecting that it will stay flat. So that really helps us budget if we know that it's going to be nineteen point one percent over the next several years. That really helps us to budget, although it's 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 high. So what's not in the May revision? There was a lot of great news in the May revision, but there was, again, we just talked about the Persian STIRS. There's no pension relief historically, whether it was Governor Brown or Governor Newsom. They propose a one-time increase to the pension obligations so that districts will get a little bit of relief. There's nothing in there right now. Transportation funding also is, as I just mentioned a few slides ago, we want to look at that because again, transportation costs are increasing. Buses now, a new bus is about four hundred thousand dollars. They used to be, I remember the day when they were about a hundred and twenty five, but that was years ago. The UPP solution, looking at universal meals, likely have immediate impact on our percentage because if you recall, board, we used to require applications to be filled out by our parents. There's no requirement to do that anymore. And so we used to get a percentage, say eighty seven percent free and reduced. But if there's no more requirement by the state, we are trying to determine with the state how we're going to get that percentage because that's how we're funded for supplemental concentration. One of the ways is our free and reduced number. So when you see the UPP solutions, they're working on that, but without the obligation to fill out those applications, it is, it will be a challenge, but we're going to work with the state on that. And with that, I appreciate it. I know I went through fairly quickly, but based on the time, I'm more than happy to take any questions the board may have at this time.
Board, do you do you have question questions?
I don't have any questions, but that was a great report. Thank you. Very nice.
Thank you, Michael. I have a question. You know, I tuned in and someone said, maybe, you know, my thoughts on facilities.
My thought came to facilities when they were talking about a one-time general fund. And I know that we just purchased some land. And actually, at the last board meeting, we got, you know, we approved a contractor to oversee our facilities on the pool, for the pool. Should it, is it a time for us to rebuild our own facility department? Even though this is one-time funding, I know that getting a contractor to oversee projects is very expensive. Is there, is that something that you, cabinet, Dr. Mitchell, that you're looking at?
It's a good, it's a great question, Scruggs.
Yeah, thank you for that question. And as we move forward, we are looking at a long-range facility master plan, which we are finalizing and we'll bring back to the board for presentation on. And it will demonstrate the need of our facilities to be upgraded in various forms. And so as we look to that, I think it's a great opportunity to talk about potentially building up because at this time, we do not have a facilities department. There is no one that does it. And so as you stated, we have to hire a contractor, but that funding could potentially fund a facility staff to be able to manage projects such as our pool, such as our land acquisition. And eventually, if we look to potentially allocate bond money or other funding to build additional facilities, yes.
Great, that's all I have. Thank you for that report. As always, very clear, concise and informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other trustees? Okay, I'm real quick. The, oh, I'm sorry, was some, someone going to say something? I didn't mean to cut anybody off. Okay, I just had a question really quick. Do you universal transitional kindergarten, will that be man- mandatory or is that optional? Will that be optional? Because I know there's a lot, I don't have little kids, but I was just curious.
Dr. Dweisin, thank you.
Yes, very good question. So yes, to universal PK is what they're calling it. So it's a combination of preschool and transitional kinder. And over the next two years, you will see that it's becoming mandatory where it's universal across the state of California.
Okay, okay, thank you on that. And I think I have, no, I did not. Oh, really quick, on the PERS, you said that it was going up, but on here it looks like it's going down. I don't understand. Or did did I misunderstand? Or did, did I misunderstand?
The purse should be going up. Let me get to that slide. I do apologize. You're looking at the person's contribution rates? So it has historically been going up. I do apologize. It was at twenty five percent this year and then it's at twenty five percent next year. You're correct. I do, I do apologize there. It is going down a little bit over the projected in the governor's may revise.
Okay, so it is going down.
Slightly.
Slightly, yes, it was going up in the January budget and so I do apologize.
Okay, no, I just, I was just kind of confused, like I thought it was going up. So was it going up? But now I get it.
You are correct. Thank you very much for that question.
No, and that's, that's all I have. That's all I have. Um, okay.
Well, thank you trustees for some great questions. Thank you, Mr. Cross for the presentation. Board, we're going to move on to the L cap presentation. And so I'm going to kind of split it between Dr. Dries on and I, so Dr. Dries on, get us started. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Board President Benz, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, Staff and Community. This evening, our superintendent, Dr. Mitchell and I will give an update on the local control and accountability plan, otherwise known as L cap. She was here in the background, but she had to leave. I want to thank our state federal coordinator, Nishay Thompson. She's been very instrumental in making sure that we are compliant and up to date. So I want to go ahead. And make sure that you know this is more of an interactive kind of presentation with our public. This and our board. So the board, the board of trustees, as well as the audience, inclusive of parents. Students, staff and the community will have a QR code that's kind of showing throughout. So you just point your, your phone at that. As far as our board, we will have a specific time period in which you're able to give feedback before we close this presentation. So basically, when you, when you get to the screen and you point your QR code, you will come across these questions. And basically, all you do is just push the little plus button there at the bottom and then you're allowed to write and type in. So this is for our community who are watching us online. So our objectives this evening are to provide a. An overview of the local control and accountability plan, otherwise known as L cap. Provide an update on the implementation of the twenty one through twenty four L cap. And share progress on the development of the two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty three annual update for the L cap. The local control and accountability plan is a three-year plan. So the first year of that implementation was two thousand twenty one. It describes the goals, activities, services and expenses to support positive student outcomes that are aligned with state and local priorities. The L cap provides an opportunity for districts to share the stories of how, what and why the select programs and services. They need to meet their local needs. The funds detailed in the L cap are specifically intended to support improving outcomes. For students who are in, who are our English learners, our foster youth and our low-income students. At this time, I'm going to turn over the slides to Dr. Mitchell.
Thank you, Dr. Drieson. So when we, when we talk about L cap, we always want to send you the L cap. On the district's mission and vision, and now most recently our board core values. The other thing is our strategic objectives that we've created, we've been working on the last year and a half or so. And so what are we after? They're not necessarily numbers, but the kind of culture and district that we're trying to create. That we use these dollars to help us achieve. So of course, having a clear culture, a warm and respectful climate. We want to engage our families. We want to create an environment where all of our staff are continuously improving. And we really want to focus heavily on building the skill, knowledge and capacity of teachers to provide high-quality classroom instruction. Next. And then the last six is M T S S are really are, how do our schools respond to student underperformance? Or student poor attendance. And so we really want to put in significant dollars to strengthen our M T S S systems. Again, always recruiting, hiring, training and retaining high-quality staff. Developing community partnerships and then aligning all of our spending toward meeting L cap goals. Our board core values, our mission and vision. And then K P I's, of course, is monitoring and measuring our achievement and performance. And then sort of lead, so we have some indicators that we've, that we've are suggesting that we're going to use as, as I, as I've told you before, board. This is our baseline year. We haven't had test scores in three years. Students have just completed their testing and most of it's done. We're just doing makeups right now. And this year will establish our baseline year. And so when you look at trailing indicators, these are the things that the public sees. Standardized test data, English language learner achievement, discipline, suspension, expulsion and attendance. You, of the last three months, we presented to you benchmark achievement data. We've prevented, we presented just most recently disciplined data. And then hopefully very soon we'll be able to present our standardized testing data. And those within, as those, when we have those data sets in place. We will be able to establish growth targets both for the district as well as the each individual schools. If you look over to the left side, our leading indicators, what actually drives trailing indicators? Is the quality of classroom instruction, the quality of student engagement, the quality of learning experiences for our adults. We believe strongly that improvements in student achievement is as a direct result of improvements in staff performance. And so focusing heavily and directing dollars heavily toward improving staff performance is a key improvement strategy for our district. Of course, the board has been clear around safe in school, safe and respectful campuses. And you know that we're working through that. The board has also approved dollars to support social emotional learning. And so we've asked, we're going to be looking to hire elementary counselors next year. We've already are looking to hire LCSWs or social workers to assist our staff and students with therapy needs. And then of course, we've talked about our resetting our P B S district-wide, those are our student behavioral systems. Staff parent and community engagement and of course, monitoring the right things in our system. And so those are the key performance indicators that I've outlined for the last couple of years. And we're looking forward to creating some data sets around us as we get test data. So I'll turn it back over to Dr. Drieson.
So the local control and accountability plan has three, as outlined, three goals. Student achievement, student supports, parent, family and community engagement. All sites were allocated dollars to support L cap goals and activities this year. So I would like to take this time to dive a little deeper into each of the three goals that we have that are aligned to our L cap. The first goal is student achievement. So student achievement will increase in English, language, arts, math, science and social studies, history. Focusing on closing the achievement gap for struggling students. So some of the activities that you will see that schools have done aligned to this particular goal include instructional technology. Elective coursework, it could be professional learning and collaboration for staff, academic coaching and support for staff. Library and media access, supplemental materials, digital materials, which includes software, programs, applications. Could be intervention, classroom libraries, tutoring, study trips, our summer enrichment. And early childhood materials. So we look for progress in this goal. So how we measure that this goal is, is working and how it's taking place is through those things that Dr. Mitchell just mentioned. So our E L A and math performance, reclassification rates and English learner L pack data. So our second goal is student supports. And this is where we provide every student the specific academic behavioral, social, emotional, mental and physical health supports. To meet individual needs, especially English learners, students with disabilities. Foster youth, homeless youth, African-American students and other student groups. Whose outcomes indicate the greatest need so that all students can remain fully engaged in school and access the core curriculum. So some of those supplemental activities just to support this particular goal include foster youth services, music and art. Elementary and secondary counselors, attendance and engagement, physical wellness, social emotional learning. And also social workers, which we know will be coming for the two thousand twenty two, twenty three school year. So we measured this particular goal through attendance, chronic absenteeism, suspension, expulsion. Middle school dropout rate, school climate and facilities conditions. The final goal, goal three is our parent, family and community engagement goal. So parents, families and community stakeholders will be informed, engaged and empowered. As partners with Adelanto Elementary School District to support student learning and improve student outcomes. So the activities that we have are family engagement workshops and training. We have a parent academy and resource fair that will be taking place on August first for our families. We have communication tools. So we are, we are excited to be launching parent square for the upcoming school year. Which will give us the ability to send out mass text messaging and have more consistent forms of communication for our community. Advisory account committees suffer with superintendent supplemental materials, enrichment, E L D and bilingual support. So we measure this progress through our parent attendance data and surveys, parent participation. So this slide represents the funding sources that we use to meet our L cap goals. So this year, for the first time, Dr. Mitchell allocated L cap funds directly to the site. So that they can support the implementation of each, each site's professional learning and collaboration plan in alignment with L cap goals. So this slide represents allocations and ending balances as of May first, two thousand twenty two. So we have just a little bit of the school year remaining. So we have our L cap or S and C, this is our supplemental and concentration funds. Used to support L cap implementation. We have title one funds that are used for evidence-based educational strategies that are used and focused on achievement gap. You have S or two funds used to address the impact of COVID nineteen. Discretionary monies are given to the sites and those can be for various educational purposes. We have lottery funds to be used. We can use those on instructional materials and technology. And then we have C S I and early literacy and not all of our schools receive those funds. So C S I is our comprehensive support and improvement block grant. And those are based on two thousand eighteen dashboard scores. So those specifically go to, we have five schools that receive funding for that. That's Adelanto, Braddock, Columbia. El Mirage and West Side Park and they have till September thirtieth to spend those funds. So they have a little bit extra time and that replenishes every year. And then the final one is the early literacy block grant funds. And those were also given to support three particular schools with literacy and charged with increasing. Their literacy proficiency rates at that school. And so the three schools that received those funds are Adelanto, El Mirage and West Side Park. And they actually have until two thousand twenty four to spend those funds. So a lot of that is just right now putting things in place. So this has been our development timeline. So moving into twenty two twenty three. So monthly sites engage parents and staff to determine the need. So that could be school site council, P T A, coffee with the principal, staff meetings. Monthly, they have cabinet and union meetings. And February through June, we distributed, we're collecting surveys, we're still collecting surveys, we keep collecting those up until. The time when we're ready to approve. And we also, we get feedback from students. So some of our students have named things like, they want more time for lunch. They want plays to take place in the middle school. So more theater programs. Staff to show compassion and be nice and expressions of thankfulness as they love learning at their school campuses. So those are feedback just from students. On May seventeenth, we held our annual D lack or L cap input session with the parents. So we are required to take that to D lack to D A C. Each, each year. And then this evening, we're having an opportunity for board to also provide input. And on May thirty first, we are going to hold our final supper with the superintendent this year. And we're focused, the main focus is on L cap. So it will be a robust session. We have breakout rooms planned in which to really generate ideas and responses from the parents. In order to input, give input into our L cap. On June fourteenth will be our public hearing. On June twenty eighth, we'll bring the plan back to the board for adoption. And then in, in August, we adjust based on test scores. And we just keep cycling that development over and over again. So that is a yearly cycle. So board, at this time, we would like to make sure that we're engaging your feedback. And we want to know what types of activities you would like us to meet. So these are our three goals within the L cap. So we had the academic achievement, social emotional learning and parent engagement. These are our three goals that we have. So at this time, I want to turn it over to Dr. Mitchell to help support this activity.
So we have staff in the back that are taking notes. And so would like to start with each, take a few minutes on each, each major block. And so like to get the board's feedback on what kinds of activities do you want to see? That you believe would accelerate student performance in the classroom. This could be professional development, supplemental materials, study trips. Science activities. Coaching, mentoring, what kinds of things? Would the board like to see? We have staff taking notes in the back. And so if I may, trustee Benz, if I could start with down the line, go down the line. Or just open discussion for the board around academic achievement and then we can hit the other two areas. So any ideas?
Okay. Am I first down this line?
Sure.
I want to say that this is a great idea, but for right now at nine forty seven, I'm sorry, I just can't think on the top of my head.
Got it. With the board would like me, how about I send this to you as a, as a link on your phone? And you both type these ideas into the, go straight to the feedback that we're collecting from parents and students and staff as well.
I was on the front line when we first, L cap first came to us and. You know, to be told on May twenty sixth, twenty fourth, what we would like to see is behind the eight ball. I'm sorry, again, I have to agree with trustee La Princess late. I was used to starting this process in February, getting our community involved with our parents and, you know. Showing the budget and what we've allocated or planning to allocate. And for the board to be asked that question at nine o'clock, nine forty eight P M. And the L cap has to be approved next month. I think that. Is really not doing our students just and creating this plan. I'm looking at the dates and some of the dates here, May seventeenth, D like L cap input section. I didn't see that on my calendar. I didn't see any of this on my calendar, actually. I do remember. I revised L cap that we had to submit to the county. But I believe that we have to do better in our time management and providing information to our community and also to the board. So our parents can be engaged. You know, you heard me talk earlier about our social emotional children are struggling and that's that. And the fact that our academic achievement is the lowest in the county. So for us to try to think of something on the top of our head, all three of these are very important to me. I would like to see all of this happen. Okay, and. But now it's not, tonight is not the time for us to do it. I would like to hold a session if we can. You know, to talk about it and think about it and how much, what funds are going to be allocated to this.
So trustee turned and board, just so you know, this is a three-year plan and what we're required to do is an update. And so this is getting feedback into for next year. If you go back to the previous slide, you see the allocations that were given to the school this year. This is the first year that, that they've been giving out L. This is the first year that, that they've been giving out LCAP funds. They have not been given before, but this is just an LCAP and not a update. No, they were not given LCAP funds.
Um, I'm sorry, but we've always, along with our budget, we approve our LCAP every year, our budget, and this is a three-year, just like our budgets are three years.
Definitely, that's what I'm saying.
And um, we've been getting LCAP funds. We've been getting the, the base grant, the concentration grant, and the supplemental grant every year.
But it wasn't, it wasn't being allocated directly to schools. Trustee Turner is what I'm saying.
I can understand that. Um, so i- if that's the case, then maybe, you know, we could have invited the board, you know, when these meetings were taking place to each school site, so we could see parent engagement and their input on what they wanted to see. I think a survey, um, I saw, I noticed last week, the first notice that I saw last week, I saw it on the website, but a lot of our parents may not go to our website and, and to take a survey. And then I did click on the survey, but it wasn't a lot of information. I was asking them questions, just like we were just asked tonight about what you want to see, but not, not a lot of information moving forward in that. So I just want to make, just let us be more um um detailed in our plan to present our LCAP to our community, to see what our community really would like to see. Because that's important, you know, especially during declining the world.
Understood, thank you.
I just want to make a quick comment. I do agree with my other trustees. It is getting late and I feel like further discussion on this would be beneficial. But my question is, I received this in my daughter's backpack just last week. Is this the survey that you're referring to that collected the data?
We sent out again, but it's been on the website since February. So it launched in February.
Okay, thank you.
Hang on. Okay, my comment is, I know my, my community, I know my area, and a lot of people still do not have internet access. A lot of people, because the economy, are getting rid of their internet access. So to just, I don't know, dial it in to just people that have access to the internet, I, I'm not happy with that. We have a huge community, very diverse. Um, people of all kinds of backgrounds and economics and stuff. And I would more prefer either something go out in paper, in writing, um even in, in um dual languages. I mean, I, I don't know, this looks very one, one-sided to me. If you don't have a computer and you don't know how to log in and get into this, and I'll be honest with you, I don't even have, my phone is so old, I can't even do this digital thing where you hold your camera or your phone up to it and it gives you information. And then I like to think I'm somewhat twenty-first century, but if I can't even do this, I can't even imagine what some of our families uh can't do, and I want to hear what they have to say. And I want them to be involved with our schools and their children's learning. So I like what you're doing, but I want it expanded uh personally. I would really like to see people get involved through maybe um, oh, I don't know, um, community hearings. Uh, back in the day, many years ago, we used to be at school sites and invite the community to come to the school site in the gymnasium or cafeteria, and we would do surveys, uh workshops, uh communication that way. Um, just doing everything um behind a computer. I don't really think we're going to get the input that we really need from everyone who has a stake in this. So I don't know. I, I understand we're twenty-first century and all that, but I also know my community and some of these people will never see this. They will never log on, they will never do this. And that's sad that we can't get all our stakeholders involved in the education of their schools and children. So I don't know, if we could do something to expand it and offer it to people, y- you know, in writing or in person, that would be really cool. I'd like to see something like that, but I don't know.
In the past, what we used to do to involve the community in our LCAP is to an all call. Every time we would host a meeting, they would do an all call to let the parents know where the meeting will take place. A lot of the times, it was here in this boardroom um in recent years. But then when it, LCAP first started, it was at school sites, different school sites, and in the evening when parents got off work, so they would have time to come out. And um, and we got full, a full house. I mean, especially when um LCAP first kicked off. So I think that if we can do an out call when we get ready to host those meetings or involve, involve our principals to do it, then that would be great. And invite everyone, because, you know, maybe not all schools. Parents may can go to what this meeting, you know, a meeting set up on that day, but not the following day. So it should be um inviting to everyone.
It's good feedback. Thank you, Board.
Okay, any other quick questions?
No.
Okay, um sixteen point zero three doc. Doc, Dr. Mitch, Mitchell has offered to hold this. Since it's getting late, we're already at that ten, ten o'clock threat threshold. What, that's the high hiring pro- process?
Well, um, I would say so, but you're having a community forum tomorrow regarding the hiring process of Eagle Ranch. And, you know, I have questions. I was under the impression that um it will come back as an agenda item and we could talk about, the board could talk about what they would like to see in hiring of a principal. But I see this update and some of the recommendations that I had last week are not here. I did see the community forum and involving community and um, you know, parents at the ground level, but I would like to see uh, community and parents involved in the entire process, all the way up to the person that you would like to recommend to the board. And, you know, you discuss it with the community member and, you know, you talk about it. Why are you referring this person? You know, and have a discussion with the community member and get that input and then bring it to the board. That's what I would like to see. Um, and I didn't see that there.
So does the board want to forego this presentation or?
Yeah. Is that what you're asking Christine to hear it?
I already read it. I mean, it's not, it's not what, it was not what I wanted. It is some of it, a lot of it is here. Community forum involving community and parents. But I want the community involved in the entire process and the community forum, not just, not to start at five thirty. A lot of parents are not home at five thirty.
We have, we have two of them.
And if they are, they haven't got their family together. I was thinking maybe something along the lines of seven o'clock. You know, so they can debrief, you know, get their family situated and then go to a meeting. But five thirty, I mean, Trustee La French be running in here pretty much every board meeting, trying to give you to her, to abort. So I don't want to see that. Oh yes, we could table this and, you know, uh, bring it back so the board can get input on it and um and you have my input. Uh, so it's up to the board what they would like to do.
Board?
What do you guys want to do?
You what?
I can't. I don't know what the board wants to do. I'm good, whatever anybody wants to do. All I know is we have thirteen minutes.
Okay, let's uh tape, table this for next time, because we do have to vote on new bit business. Ten thirty?
I extended it for an hour and it was at nine thirteen.
Oh, I thought you meant an hour from the time that we.
Yeah.
And at nine thirty.
I guess you could look at it that way. You, usually we don't extend the meeting till that nine thirty time or around there. It was nine thirteen when I, when it got called and.
Yeah, okay. Well, we, we still, still have time, so let's just go, go on to new biz, business. Is that, is that okay? Okay with the board?
Yes.
Okay, great. Let, let's go on to seven, seventeen point zero one. Uh, approval of the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three to develop developer fees, just justification step study and resolution, solution number twenty-one point twenty-two point third thirty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve? Webster motions to approve. Can I get a sec- second? I second. We're open for discussion, discussion?
There was going to be um, I don't know, a discussion, a presentation on this, but one thing that really caught my eye. Um, I've been in this district for a long time and on page four, I noticed that it said at one point, we had over ten thousand students. Sorry, sorry. Okay, backing up. I didn't know if there was going to be a presentation on this, but going through it, something that really caught my eye was at one point, they're saying we had over ten thousand students. We have never had over ten thousand students. And it showed we even had nine thousand, and, and this is over one, two, three, four, five, five years. And questioning that makes me question this whole thing. Um, so can someone explain that to me? I mean, they're going over our historical enrollment. And even earlier, Mr. Kraus had even said that we only had uh seven, eight thousand kids at any tenure period. So should I be concerned about this, that, that they said that according to our historical enrollment, we've had over ten thousand kids or nine thousand for several years?
Uh, Mr. Kraus. Yes, thank you for that question. Uh, I only went back in my presentation back to fifteen, sixteen, but they go back based on the uh information at the California Department of Education. I don't have that in front of me, but I'll be more than happy to uh go back and, and work with them to get as historical as far back as we can on the enrollment. Um, but again, my presentation this evening for the May revise, I only went back to fifteen, sixteen.
Right.
That information they glean goes all the way back as far as they can get it for uh, from the California Department of Education. That's where they pull all their data from.
And they got this specifically for our district?
Mr. Landry is on, Mr. Kraus.
Oh, absolutely. If Mr. Landry is still with us on Zoom, if he'd like to just speak uh to the uh study for a moment, Mr. Landry, you can unmute yourself. There you go.
Good evening, Board. Uh, good evening, evening, everyone. And, and I will go back and double check this information. We typically pull from the CPEDS, uh CPEDS website that has the CalPeds information in there. There is some potential that we may have picked up a charter school or something, so let me go back and double check that. I can confirm though that the information on the go-forward basis is accurate. I will double check that and, and provide that information back to Mr. Kraus to confirm.
Okay, so do, do we need to ta- table this or can we go, will this affect the actual I, I, item?
The historical enrollment does not affect um the calculation for the go-forward. And all this does, this, this entire process of updating this fee is just bringing us up to the current standard that the state set for level one fees.
Okay.
Well, the reason why it concerns me, and you said, Mr. Kraus, she went to two thousand fifteen, sixteen, and that was when they're saying we had our highest enrollment of over ten thousand. You, or just a few minutes ago, did not show that enrollment. So again, that kind of makes me question this whole thing, because if they're saying that historically we have that many kids, and this is the justification report of why we're doing this, and we're not getting our enrollment correct for that, for that year and the years behind it. Again, I've been here and we've never had nine thousand students, ten thousand students. That, that kind of concerns me unless I'm really missing something here. So I don't know. I, I don't feel comfortable knowing that our enrollment is way off. I, I don't know where those numbers are coming from. I don't know. That's just me. It, it's, it just really checked out at me.
Yeah, very good question. I, I will, I will check that, Board Member, um, and double check it. What I can assure you is that does not affect the calculation for the fee amount um that's being justified through this process.
Okay.
So, Mr. Kraus, just briefly, so you can assure the board, with the, the state says the developer fees, uh, we need to, Board approves to collect that amount. And so this is money to our district based upon the new houses that are being built, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So Board, uh, for years, we were not updating our developer fees. And so when you build a house, you owe the district money and the state sets that rate, but the board has to adopt that rate. So this is what is before the board to do this evening.
I do have another question. I don't know if Mr. Kraus is aware of this. I was told that the city council approved. I want to say it's a two hundred apart, uh, two-bedroom, two-hundred apartment complex over on um, oh, it's, I, I'm always getting my, my side of town mixed up. It's off Urbina and three ninety-five, um, no, Palmdale. Have you heard of that? Because I was told it was brought to city council, they approved it, and in this man's um presentation, the developer, he said that we were actually going to build a school for them, because people were questioning, where are they going to put all these kids that are in this apartment complex? And it would be over by um Columbia Middle School and Ted Vic. Have you heard or do you know anything about this apartment complex?
Uh, we were aware months ago that there was a proposal. We were not aware that it went to city council uh yet. Uh, Mr. Landry and his team are part of uh that, where they work with our planning department for the City of Adelanto and the City of Victorville to uh update any kind of proposals that have been approved. Um, I'm not aware also that the statement was potentially made about building a school, but we definitely will look into that if that was a statement. I, I'm not aware of that, but definitely something to look into if they did make that statement.
Yeah, I was really shocked. So if you could look into that, please, because I was, I could be wrong. But I was told from a pretty good source that they did go to city council, it was approved, and that they said what they needed to say to get it passed. And I was told that our school district was mentioned that we would make sure a school was built or available room for all these kids in this apartment complex. So I mean, if I'm wrong, I'm wrong and I apologize, but if not, we kind of need to know this stuff. Thank you. I would appreciate uh it, whatever you can find out about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so this, this, but this I, item will not be affected. So I think we can go, go ahead and go with the vote to accept, to, to approve. Okay, Trustee Akis?
Until I have further uh information, I'm going to vote no.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster? Trustee Benz? Benz, I, mo- motion pa- passes for one. Okay, go, going on to seven, seven, seventeen point zero, zero two. Approval of the con- contract amend amendment for the soup superintendent tenant reflect, reflecting an increase in the medical in insurance cap to eight, eighteen thousand, six hundred fifty-two, effective Jul- July first, twenty twenty-two, and an increase in the li- life insurance, insurance to one hundred fifty, fifty thousand, thousand dollars. Effect, effective Jul- July first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion.
And can I get a sec- second?
My second. And, and we want to say only because I know that it was modified at the beginning of the meeting when it said a two point two five on salaries scheduled right to active to July first, twenty twenty-one.
I'm sorry. I'm on seven, so seventeen point zero, zero two.
That's correct, Miss, Miss Le Bay.
She, she did an amendment, so I just want to make, just make clear that it's not approval of the contract reflecting a three point two five on schedule.
Whereas, okay.
Yeah.
And that just, we're just speaking of the medical insurance cap and an increase to the life insurance effective July first, twenty twenty-two.
Yes.
And it is correctly of uh reflected in the actual contract amendment to trustees, just so you know. Just strictly a typo.
Yes. Yes. Okay. Uh, any discussion, discussion? Can we get a vote? Trustee Akis?
I.
Trustee La French?
I.
Trustee Turner?
Hi.
Trustee Webster?
Hi.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, motion pa- passes five zero, zero. Okay, seven, seventeen point zero, zero three. Approval of the con- contract amend amendment for the assist, assistant su- superintendent. Of ac- academic ser- services reflecting a three point two five on sched- schedule sal- salary. And increase red retro to July first, twenty twenty-one. An increase in the med, medical insurance cap to eighteen thousand, thousand, six hundred fifty-two. Effective July first, twenty twenty-two, and an increase in the life insurance. To one hundred fif- fifty thousand, thousand, effective July first, twenty twenty-two.
I would like to, um. Approve for discussion.
Okay, let's approve for discussion, can?
I mean, motion for discussion.
Sorry. And I'm just like, okay.
Okay, um, I would like to modify the language on this. Not take it retroactive to July twenty twenty-one and make it effective July first, twenty twenty-two. For the two, three point two five on schedule salary increase and the medical insurance cap and the life insurance. Everything start July first, twenty twenty-two, no retroactive. That's not much. That's my motion.
That's your motion. Do, do we have a sec, second?
Webster seconds.
Uh, I do have a second from trustee Akis.
Okay, so let me understand. You're not doing the retro?
No.
But you are still doing the raise?
Yes, because we agree to that, but we did not agree to the retro.
Oh, I don't remember that discussion.
We did everyone but the superintendent.
Yeah.
Now retro. So we're in discussion. We can't whisper back here. We gotta talk.
Yeah. Okay, so you're still giving them a raise, we're just not retroing it?
Yes, because we did agree to that.
I, again, I don't remember that discussion.
Because it was for, remember, um, that was for negotiations. It was for everyone but superintendent.
Yeah, but I also remember a discussion of length of years.
Okay, that's the motion, um, within, um. Okay, that's it.
We need a sec.
We have a second.
No, we do. We have a second by trustee Akis.
Oh, so we do?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so we're, is there any more discuss- discussion? Okay, here, here none. Let's take, take a vote. Trustee Akis?
Um, can I vote later? Uh, I'll be honest with you. I would like to change my voting pattern. For the last two years, I have always had to vote first and that's not fair to me. Because I need to think things through. I, we should take turns on who votes first, who votes second. I, I'm just not ready to vote. I, I need to process things and right away it's thrown at me. And I do feel sometimes it sways the vote, the rest of the board's vote. So, something's going to have to change. I mean, if you guys want to continue this today, fine. But at the next board meeting, I really want my voting to be lower down the totem pole. I can't keep voting first all the time. It's not fair to me. But, um, tonight, because I don't have time to process this, because I'm hearing something else now, other than what I thought we discussed. I'm going to have to vote no at this time.
Can I, can I comment some more? I think that what happened was, um, the reason why we didn't want to take a retroactive was because, um. The assistant's so, so long on the job one year. And that'll take it to the beginning, pretty much to the beginning of their contract. And they agreed to that amount of money for twenty twenty-one. So that's the reason why we did not go retroactive.
No, I understand the retro, but I could have sworn we had a discussion that we even talked about. They haven't even been here a year, so why are we giving raises to people who haven't been here a year? I know this is getting nasty, but I remember a different conversation, so I, I'm confused right now. I'm, I'm thrown off. That's why voting first is hard for me because I'm trying to process what I thought we discussed. And now I'm like, whoa, I'm hearing something else, so I don't know.
I, I understand. Okay, so we're going to go for the vote. Any other questions? No, I'm taking.
I already voted, so next, you know.
Trustee La French?
Oh, wait, wait. We do have to wait for Ben's for the vote. We have to wait for her for the vote because we're voting now.
I don't know.
Any other discussion?
Well, you know, just for transparency and honesty, um, I've never been in a job for a year and then got a raise. You know, I mean, you, you, you're in a job for a while and you earn your raise. It, I, I, I don't know, just being given to you. And then the retro thing totally threw me off. It's, I don't know. I, I don't know.
Trustee Akis, just to clarify, we have plenty of teachers, classified staff and managers who started this year. And will be receiving a raise, just for clarification.
No, I understand that. I totally understand that, but I look at upper management differently sometimes. And I have that prerogative as a board member. If, you know, um, I have one and only one employee. And then I have people underneath that employee and those are the ones that I concentrate on. I understand the district does its thing and we have, you know, uh, contracts and unions and negotiation. I get all that, but I tend to focus more on upper management when it comes to things like this. And like I said, maybe I can, I compare myself too much because I'm a layman. But I've never been in a job where I got a raise within the first year of being on the job anywhere. But I, I guess that's the difference between school districts and being a layman in a regular job. I don't know.
I got, got a raise af- after my, my first, first year at my job. Just saying.
Teaching?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. The teaching industry or job or profession's different than your average layman. I've been a medical assistant. I have been a hairdresser. I've worked in the public field many years. Never got a raise within the first year. I was lucky to have that job and I had to perform. And, you know, you have to really be there a while to get that raise. But anyway, like I said, I'm, I'm a layman and that's how I think.
Okay, so we're, we're on the vote?
Yes, Madam President, I already have trustee Akis, trustee La French?
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, motion passes for one, right? Okay, thank you.
I just want to be clear, no retroactive.
No, right. Okay, yeah. All right, so, okay, so then we go on to the approval of the con- contract. Uh, amend amendment for the assist, assistant superintendent of business ser- 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 services. Reflecting a three point two five percent on sched- schedule sal- salary. And increase rev- rich, not re- retro. Can, can I take, take it out now as I reread it? Okay, not, so skip that.
Or just say effective July first.
Yes. Effect, effective Jul- July first, twenty twenty, twenty-two. On an increase in the med, medical in, insurance cap to eight, eighteen thousand, thousand, six hundred fifty-two. And an increase to life insur- insurance to one hundred fifty, fifty thousand, thousand doll- dollars. Effect, effective Jul- July, July first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
I motion.
And can I get a sec, second? Can, we've already had a long discussion for the fir- first one. Can we, can we skip to, to the vote?
Trustee Akis?
No.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, mo- mo- motion pa- passes for one. Going on to seven, seventeen point zero five. Approval of the con- contract amen- amendment for the assist, assistant superintendent. Of human resource sources reflecting a three point two two five on sched- schedule sal- salary. In increase, an increase in the med, medical in, insurance cap. To eight, eighteen thousand, thousand, six hundred fifty-two. Effect, effective Ju- July first, twenty twenty-two, and an increase to li- life insurance. To one hundred fifty, fifty thousand, thousand doll- dollars. Effective Ju- July first, twenty twenty-two. Can I get a mo- motion to approve? Thank you. Can I get a sec, second?
I second.
Thank you. And can I get a vote, please?
Trustee Akis?
No.
Trustee La French?
Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
Hi.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, motion passes for one. Go, going on to seven, seventeen point zero, zero six. Approve the dec- declaration of need for full, fully qual- qualified edge educators. For twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Can I get a mo- motion to approve?
Trustee Turner, I.
Thank you. Can I get a sec, second? Thank you. Any quick questions? Hearing none, call for, for the vote?
Trustee Akis?
No.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
No.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, mo- motion pa- passes three, two. Okay, go, going on to seven, seventeen point oh, sev- seven. Uh, approve June, Juneteenth as a paid hall, hall, holiday. As a paid dis- district hall, holiday for spec- specified dis- district employees. Can I get a motion to approve?
I second.
Okay, uh, mo- motion by La French and a second by trustee Akis. Are there any questions, discussion, discussion? Hearing none. I think, think it's cool. I like, I like it. Okay, uh, please call for the vote?
Trustee Akis?
I.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's, I, motion passes five zero zero, which brings us to adjournment. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I motion.
And can I get a sec, second? Thank you. Can we get a vote?
Trustee Akis?
I.
Trustee La French? Trustee Turner?
I.
Trustee Webster?
I.
Trustee Ben?
Ben's mo- 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 motion pa- passes five zero zero. The time is now ten twenty-four. Everyone, please have a good night.